Good morning.
Morning, sir.
I want to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Ditten County Commissioners Court. And before I call Dr. Richardson up, who's going to lead us in our invocation, I have some comments I'd like to share with y'all. I was deeply saddened, and it was with a heavy heart that I watched the tragic events of cowardly terrorism that have occurred the last three days in Israel, one of our closest allies. Today, I ask our residents for your support and solidarity as we remember the over one thousand Israeli residents and eleven Americans who lost their lives in multiple terrorist attacks. These senseless acts of violence have left families shattered, communities in mourning, and hearts across the globe heavy with grief. We must come together to stand in unwavering support of Israel during these difficult times. In moments like these, it is essential that we set aside our differences and join together in a powerful display of unity. Regardless of our backgrounds, beliefs, or affiliations, we share a common humanity that binds us. My prayer would be that we all demonstrate and share the same values of peace, compassion, and the belief that every life is precious. As Nobel Peace Prize winner Martin Luther King Jr. once said, darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. I ask that residents across Ditten County commit themselves to be that shining light. I ask you join me in a moment of silence to pray for the hostages and their families, that they may have a peaceful reunion, a moment to remember and honor the innocent lives lost on both sides, a moment to send our thoughts and prayers to the families who are suffering unimaginable pain, and a moment to reaffirm our commitment to standing with our allies in Israel as they defend themselves. And I'd welcome Dr. Richardson forward.
Let's pray. Our God and our Father, we come to you this morning with broken hearts and with grateful hearts. Father, we come to you in supplication, we just come to you with a request, God, that your will be made whole on this earth, your will of love, mercy, peace, kindness, compassion. Father, we just ask that the fruits of the Holy Spirit be modeled in our world today. Father, we bring to you the suffering in the Middle East, we bring to you the suffering at home, we bring the suffering in Europe. Father, we see these examples. We just ask that your love, your mercy, your peace, and the love displayed by the sacrifice of your son, Father, we ask that that love be infected all across this globe, that that example of sacrifice be something that we can all collectively emulate. Father, we ask you be with those being persecuted all around the globe, but in the Middle East, Father. We ask that the sons and daughters of Isaac and Ishmael could come together, Father, could come together and find a resolution. And, Father, we know that justice is yours and not necessarily ours. We know that in the end, these things will be made right. So, Father, we bring these hopes, these prayers, Father, we bring the suffering of others to you, and we ask for the wisdom to be agents of peace, that we could be people of principle, and that principle be of love and compassion, because that is what Jesus, your Son, exemplled to us. May we take that example, and may we move forward this day, this week, and in our lives. And it's through Jesus, His healing life explained through us in His sacrifice. We ask this through the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Richardson. And at this time, I'd like to welcome our Girl Scouts forward, who are going to lead us in our pledges. Madeline Guthals, Corey Jackson, Esther Jordan, Brayer Maloney, Abigail Turner, and Scarlett Yancey. Good morning, girls. There we go. All right, girls.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, and I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, let's give our Girl Scouts a big hand. Wow. Thank you. Great job, girls.
I told them, Judge, that there was no need to be nervous, that they had this, and they did a great job so loud and clear, everybody could hear them. We thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Ms. Cheryl has something for you.
I'm sorry, but, Judge.
Oh, no, it's great.
Where's the Thin Mints?
Yes, Thin Mints next time.
This is when you bring your order form. I'm going to sell out.
You'll need to, yeah, you'll need to come next, right up to the new year, when I start, was it January, February?
When we start selling.
All right, bring a form. Bring a form. Let's go to, we'll go to item, we'll skip around with certain guests with us today. Let's go to item three B, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing October twenty-three as Chiropractic Health Month, and if our guests will come forward. Good morning.
Good morning.
If you'll state your name for the record.
Andrew Oteo.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
This is a court proclamation recognizing October as Chiropractic Health Month, and whereas about twenty percent of adults in the U.S. and one in five experience chronic pain, which lasts more than three months, and whereas new cases of chronic pain occur more frequently among adults than new cases of other common chronic conditions such as diabetes and high blood pressure, and whereas in the U.S., musculoskeletal conditions, a common cause of chronic pain, result in more than one hundred and thirty million healthcare visits annually, making them the number one reason people visit their doctors, and whereas low back pain, which ranks among the most common forms of chronic pain, has been one of the leading reasons why people are prescribed opioids, and the, and the number of people worldwide living with back pain is projected to increase by thirty-six percent to three hundred and forty-three million over the next thirty years. And according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, one in four patients who receive prescription opioids long-term for non-cancer pain struggle with addiction. And whereas the American College of Physicians Low Back Pain Treatment Guidelines promote the use of non-invasive, non-drug approaches such as spinal manipulation, is a first-time line of, is a first line of defense against back pain before the use of pain medications and surgery, and whereas the CDC's two thousand and twenty-two Clinical Practice Guideline for prescribing opioids promotes diverse approaches and varied pain management solutions, and specifically encourages the use of non-opioid and non-pharmaceutical therapies as a first line of treatment against subacute and chronic pain. And whereas with the theme of chiropractic relief restored and resumed, National Chiropractic Health Month, two thousand and twenty-three, reminds citizens of Ditten County, Texas, that non-drug treatments for low back pain, neck, and joint pains such as spinal manipulation and other chiropractic services can help relieve pain and restore joint function, helping people to resume their lives and activities that matter the most. And now, therefore, a beat resolved, the Ditten, the Ditten County, Texas officially joins the American Chiropractic Association, the Texas Chiropractic Association, and the Parker University, and proclaiming the month of October, two thousand and twenty-three, as Chiropractic Health Month, done in open court this the tenth day of October, two thousand and twenty-three, upon a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? Well, I think anything that can help reduce our dependence upon opioids is a good thing. So, thank you for what you do, and we know that that's a, opioids is, abuse is a, is an issue across Ditten County and Texas in the U.S., and we appreciate y'all's other treatment therapies, because I think that's, that's very beneficial. So, do you have anything to add?
Just, you know, it's, it's an honor to be a chiropractor, to serve patients, you know, every day we go in the office and we get to see lives change in front of us, and the responsible way that we try to manage patients is least invasive to most invasive, and avoiding drugs, avoiding unnecessary medications, avoiding surgeries. I do a lot with veteran groups and organizations, and just seeing that impact, and really that generational impact that that can make on people, especially with addictions, and, you know, literally seeing lives transform in front of us is, is just such a blessing. So, thank you for that proclamation, thank you guys for the, the time on that, I really appreciate it.
Perfect, good, well, thank you, Doctor. All right, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and ames. We thank you. We'll take a quick picture.
All right, you'll stand right here in front of center. All right, he got this bright light on him.
All right, we're going to do our Breast Cancer Awareness Month in just a few minutes as we, as we get closer to the time where we're going to step outside and do a photograph, okay? So, let's go to item four A, this is a public hearing, four A, which is a public hearing to consider and approve of the name change of a segment of a road currently named Arvin Hill Road to F.C. Smithu Road, located in Ditten County Commissioner Precinct One. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
To open, please.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and ames. We are in a public hearing. We do have one registered speaker for item four A, this is Cleburne Mitch Smithu, and I've got to come forward and help me with the pronunciation, please, sir, if you'd be kind enough, and.
Smitho, sir.
Smitho.
That's close enough.
Sir?
That's close enough.
All right, say it one more time, so I'll get it straight.
Smitho, Smitho.
All right. Okay, if you'll move that mic over, that'd be great.
Smitho.
All right, there we go. Perfect. All right, we're, sir, thank you for being here, and our individuals for public comment have three minutes, so I'll go ahead and set the timer for you. Go right ahead, sir.
Like I said, my name is Cleber, my name is Cleber Mitch Smitho, excuse me. I live in the northwest corner, Worth Highway three seventy-seven, the Arvin Hill meets south of Warrburg, on property purchased in eighteen eighty-nine by my great-grandfather. Except for losing land during road improvement to the two roads voiding our property, our land has remained intact in continuity, farmed and ranch by our family for the last one hundred and thirty-four years. It was recognized as a century ranch through the Texas Department of Agriculture, Family Land Heritage Program. My parents, F.C. and Edith Smitho, came to live on the property in the early nineteen thirties. My father farmed peanuts and raised cattle on the land. In the mid nineteen forties, the REA extended electrical service to our area. While asking the residents if they were interested in joining REA, the REA also asked, also asked the members to volunteer their labor to help dig the holes, set the poles, and stretch the wire needed for electrical service to home. My father volunteered to help the REA crew build the lines. My father was such a good worker, but when the installation was completed, the REA boss asked my father to continue working, and he served and worked for CoServe, which is now called CoServe, for twenty-five years. When the residents in our area decided they needed a safe water supply, my father supported the idea that a public water supply was the answer. He campaigned to start the system. He talked to many friends and neighbors to encourage them to join the group to start the organization. As a result of his efforts, along with the efforts of others, Mustang Water Supply was started in nineteen sixty-six with fifty members. My father was on the first board of directors. He was, he remained on the board through the end of the nineteen seventies. At that time, the membership had grown to four hundred members, and the first large storage tank was installed. Today, it is called Mustang Special Utility Districts and serves more than twenty-nine thousand customers. My father also enjoyed the beauty of a tree, and he was always planting new trees on the place. Thus, when the Highway Beautification Act of nineteen sixty-five was passed by U.S. Congress, he sought and received special permission from TechStop to plant trees along the roadway in front of our place. He eventually planted and nurtured more than twelve trees. These trees thrive for decades and provide beautification along the roadway. However, they no longer exist because TechStop cut them down to widen three seventy-seven to make a left turn lane for Stewart Road. For his tireless effort to improve his community, I would like a four hundred and seventy-seven foot of unnamed portion of original Arvin Hill adjacent to the southernmost boundaries of our property, named after my father, F.C. Smitho. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is there any, is there anyone else in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the item on the agenda? Is there anyone else in favor, in attendance, wishes to speak in favor of or opposed to?
Move to close?
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Williams to close the public hearing, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and ames. We have a motion for the renaming.
Move to approve, please, sir.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? Well, I would just like to thank y'all for being here, and thank you for your family's rich history and legacy here in Ditten County. And so, I do want to, I too come from a family of longtime, multi-generation Ditten County residents, and, and while we welcome new folks every day to the county, about eighty-six a day, it's great to see familiar faces and people who have helped build this county over the last hundred years, and so y'all's family definitely is one of those, and I concur with the motion that we should, the, it's quite appropriate to rename this portion of the road in honor of your family, so thank you. All right, as members, are there any other comments?
Yeah, just real quick, Judge, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to say, I appreciate you bringing this to my, my attention at one of our meetings, it was wonderful, and, you know, you introduced yourself, and I got to hear the long, rich story of your family, and what a wonderful story it is, and, and so I'm more than happy and very appreciative that the rest of the, my coworkers agreed with us on, on changing the name here. So, thank you, guys.
Absolutely. All right, we have a motion, a second, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and ames. We will thank you and congratulations. Mr. Smitho, I would like to give you a commemorative coin for today. This is of our courthouse, and this is a, this is a special remembrance of y'all's, y'all's trip here to the.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, of course, absolutely.
And if you'll, if you'll hold on, we'll do a quick picture in a minute, we're about to take a break in about five minutes, so. All right, let's call forward our, our guests for item three C, which is approval of the proclamation recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Ditten County. If y'all want to come forward. Cheryl, who do we have from the Health Department? Okay, come forward. We'll be happy to. We got the memo today on the wearing pink, and Cheryl, thank you for your reminder as All right, I'll go ahead and read this, and then we'll entertain some comments as well. So, this is a, well, go ahead, why don't y'all make your comments first, Alex, and then we'll go ahead.
Sure, absolutely. Judge and Commissioners, thank you so much for having us this morning. It's an honor to be with you today to recognize this is special observance month. We have our team from our Women's Health Program, as well as our women infants and children, and then, of course, our fearless leaders here with us today to recognize with our community the importance of breast cancer awareness and early screening and detection. I'm really excited for the proclamation reading, because I think it well encompasses the intent behind today and the observance, and I'm so proud of everyone for remembering to wear their pink today. If I might, I would love to just introduce a couple of members of our team really quickly. We have some of our clinical team here with us. Unfortunately, our nurse practitioner is actually over in the clinic, so I guess it is fortunate, but she's not with us this morning. But I would like to recognize Stephanie Tatalos, who is the clinician with our team, as well as some of our Women's Health Program team. We have Shannon, Adriana, and Laura joining us, as well as Fabiola Vanegas and Candace, who lead our outreach efforts for our Women's Health Program and team. So, thank you for having us this morning, and thank you for remembering to wear pink. My daughter is also representing her pink this morning, today at school, so.
I bet she is. I bet she is. Well, while we take this moment every year to, to honor this special month, it really is a year-round effort, and I want to thank, on behalf of our million residents, I want to thank y'all, as I sit here and look at these smiling faces from our Health Department, I want to thank y'all for being the front lines in, in educating, and advising, and, recommending for folks across the county, and you save lives. And that is a, that is a great calling, and I want to thank y'all for what y'all do, and then not just today, and not just this month, but really three sixty-five, so thank y'all so much. All right, so I'll go ahead and read this. All right, so I'll go ahead and read this. This is a court proclamation recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Denton County. And whereas while progress- while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the second most commonly diagnosed cancer and second-leading cause of cancer deaths among women in the United States. And whereas each year in the United States, more than 30,000 new cases are diagnosed, and more than 43,000 community members die of breast cancer, whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness of the disease. And whereas Denton County affirms our commitment to support the education of all residents about the risk factors, early detection, treatment, and support services surrounding breast cancer. And whereas we display pink ribbons to raise awareness, we also support those courageously fighting breast cancer and honor the lives lost to the disease. And whereas this October, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling disease, their families and friends, who serve as a source of encouragement and support, and applaud the efforts of medical professionals and researchers working to find a cure. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity for the Denton County community to support routine screening and awareness, and now therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby recognize the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Denton County. Done in open court, this is the 10th day of October 2023, upon a motion made by- motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? Yes, please, sir.
Thank you so much. Well, I appreciate you all so much for this. I want to introduce my special breast cancer survivor, who's in the back there, my wife, Susan Falconer. So, one year ago today, she was going into surgery for her to get rid of breast cancer. And it is amazing, the progress that's been made in this- the fight against this disease. You know, there's a lot of- there's a lot of good causes around. And- but when you've gone through that, one of the things that was amazing to me was you can see how the money that has gone into research and the progress in fighting this disease really is evident when you go through that. The doctors and the nurses and all the team, there's a great roadmap for those who have to go through this ordeal. And it's a long journey. She just had her, what we hope to be her last reconstruction surgery, just four weeks ago. So, yes, and doing quite well. But there is definitively hope. It is definitely something that we have a great way to fight today. And by the way, we also had lots of people in this very courtroom praying for her through this whole experience. And she and I are both stronger for the entire process, so. But thank you all for making that- this awareness is- really does make a difference, Judge.
Absolutely. Anyone, Commissioner?
A few words. I just want to echo what Kevin says, but thank you all for all that you do. Many lives have been touched by breast cancer, many families, and a lot of times we think it's just women, but it's men also. So, we have to continue to advocate, we have to continue to provide funds to- so we can eradicate this disease, because it touches everyone, and it's- my sister was a breast cancer survivor. And so, I know how hard it was for her, so I just want to thank you again. Thank you for all that you do, not just women. I appreciate the work that you put into this, and I'm honored every year when you come to do this proclamation for you, because I know the work that goes behind it. Keep up the good work on all these dreadful diseases that we have. Thank you.
All right, yes, sir.
Judge, I've got one thing. I also want to thank- my mother's a breast cancer survivor, and I want to thank, obviously, the physicians and the nurses that helped her- they saved her life, actually. Without that, there would be a lot more deaths, and you're absolutely right. We've come a long ways with all the donations and the people that pray. We've come a long ways with research and involvement, and we still have ways to go, but I want to thank you all for all your efforts. Thank you, Judge.
Very good, absolutely. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries and ames. All right, here we go. All right, we're gonna do- we're gonna do a picture in here with our team, and then I'm inviting everyone within the sound of my voice to go outside to the backyard, and we're going to do a special photograph with- in the shape of a ribbon, like we did last year, be our second annual opportunity to do this. So, let's do a picture here with our Denton County team, and then we'll go outside.
And then before we go outside, let's make sure we take care of them, if you don't mind, Judge.
Yeah, that's what I planned.
Oh.
Thank you, Michelle, for your patience. I'd like to kind of do, do these two items. Let's go to item fourteen D. Approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement, the ICA between Denton County, Texas and the town of Little M. For collection of special assessments levied by Valencia Public Improvement District number two. Chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item fourteen G. Approval of the agreement for point-of-sale motor vehicle registration renewal between Denton County, Texas and Decra Services Incorporated. As recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank, thank you, Michelle. Alright. Let me see here. Let's go back to the beginning. We'll go to item one, which is for public input for items not listed on the agenda and share we have no one registered for that. So we'll proceed forward to item number two, which is our consent agenda. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Or do we have a motion for approval as presented?
So moved.
With a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, our consent agenda today consists of item two A. Approval of order-making appointments. Item two B is approval of intra-departmental transfers. Item two C is approval of payroll. Item two D is approval of budget amendment request one zero 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 three zero for the Department of Transportation and Engineering to transfer. Seven thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars from line item number two zero six eight one zero eight five seven zero. The road and bridge unappropriated contingency to allow item two zero four two five six eight five seven zero. Technology equipment purchase, laptops, monitors, docking stations, and keyboards for project managers. And item two E is approval of budget amendment request one zero 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 four zero for the Treasury. Purchases to transfer forty-two thousand from training and education expense to legal services to pay Nexus Lexus subscription. For the remainder of the fiscal year for the criminal district attorney's office. Next, let's go to item three A. This is approval of resolution recognizing Jesse Acevedo's retirement and any appropriate action. And Jesse could not be with us today, but we still want to honor them with this resolution. This is resolution honoring Jesse Acevedo for nine years of dedicated service to Denton County. The Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas during a regular session on the tenth day of October twenty twenty-three considered the following resolution. Whereas Jesse Acevedo was a loyal employee with the Department of Transportation and Engineering. Beginning his career on May the twenty-eighth twenty fourteen and retiring on September the twentieth twenty twenty-three. Whereas Jesse was hired as a driver equipment operator one and later promoted to driver equipment operator two. Whereas Jesse was a dedicated employee who provided a high level of quality and valuable service to the Department of Transportation and Engineering. And earned the respect of all who worked with him. Whereas Jesse's devotion to assisting his coworkers was greatly appreciated and respected by his fellow colleagues, and he will be deeply missed. Jesse, having worked outside for the past nine years in various conditions, looks forward to spending his winters somewhere warm. And his summers somewhere cool. And Jesse, we wish you all the best on that. And preferably indoors. Jesse looks to enjoy each and every new adventure that comes his way after retirement alongside his many friends and family. And whereas the Department of Transportation and Engineering would like to thank Jesse for his commitment and hard work throughout his career. And wish him well in his retirement. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas does hereby extend to Jesse Acevedo. Our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Jesse on his well-earned retirement. Extend our best wishes to him for continued success, happiness, and good health in years to come. Done in open court this the tenth day of October twenty twenty-three upon a motion by the chair.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Jesse, thank you so much, and I hope you get a chance to tune in and watch this court proceeding so you can see this very thoughtful acknowledgement of your nine years with Denton County. So thank you so much. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next, let's go to five A. Acceptance of approval of the twenty twenty-four cost allocation plan provided by Justice Benefits Incorporated and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is five B. Approval of bill report payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TEIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture. VIT interest in the forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have one addition today for our P. Card bill to City Bank for three hundred sixty thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents.
Perfect. We have a motion for approval?
Yes, so moved.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A. Approval of the reports on proceeds from the online surplus auction. This is two three two seven seven three held in August and September twenty twenty-three and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six B. Approve, approval of the report on proceeds for an online surplus auction, two three two seven seven four, held in August, September twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six G. Approval of award of lines three and four for of ITB two three two seven seven nine dual Freeman Bernard Road. Repair to Rose Contracting and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six H. Approval of purchase of a Pendar X ten handheld Raymond chemical detector. From Safewear Incorporated, amount of sixty-five thousand through Omnia Partners Cooperative Contract and any appropriate action.
Move.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six I. Approval of Evaluation Committee's recommendation to rank Half Associates Incorporated. As most qualified firm for the Teasley Storage Fire Suppression Project under RFQ two 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 six seven nine MEP Services miscellaneous facilities. And any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six J. Approval of Evaluation Committee's recommendation to rank HOK as the most qualified firm. For RFSQ two three two seven six three Architectural Services, Denton County Courts Building Expansion and site master plan and any appropriate action.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I want to thank all the committee members who worked on that. I know that was a considerable task of going through those evaluations. I want to thank the, all the committee members for that. Number seven A is approval of a budget man request one zero 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 one zero to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for the diabetes case management program. For the delivery system reform incentive payments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four in the amount of two million, two million four hundred sixty-seven thousand three hundred eleven dollars.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven B. Approval of budget man request one zero 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 two zero for the juvenile probation department to increase revenues and allocate expenditures in the amount of five hundred seventy-three thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars. To just salaries for the juvenile probation personnel for fiscal year twenty twenty-four that was approved by the Texas Juvenile Justice Department. Any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to. Eight A, which is approval of an extension to the temporary program manager slot zero zero five CO for the county criminal court number three Veterans Court. Chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight B. Report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one promotion in the county clerk, two new hires in adult probation. One new hired in the district attorney's office, two new hires in juvenile probation, ten new hires in the sheriff's office. Fourth promotion in the sheriff's office, two rehires in the sheriff's office, one lateral transfer in the sheriff's office. And one promotion in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect. Thank you, Gustavo. And I'm pleased to report we got more new hires in the sheriff's office. So I believe. Yeah, and DOs. I believe the efforts the Commissioners Court took this budget year obviously paying off.
Yep.
Alright, thank you. There's no, as for recording purposes, only no official action. Let's go to item twelve A. Is approval of the renewal of subscriber agreement between Denton County Sheriff's Office and West Publishing Corporation at Thompson Reuters. Business for clear pro flex database access for a term of thirty-six months. And motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve B. Approval of the participation agreement between All Paid in Denton County for the receiving and processing of payments in regards to bail bonds and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve C. Approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four interlocal agreement for the use of the Denton County radio communication system for Crum ISD Police Department and any appropriate action.
Remove to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen A. Approval of United Way of Denton County Incorporated Fund and Request to Fulfill the Allocation of American Rescue Plan for Housing Assistance, Nonprofit Assistance, and Food Assistance. Due to COVID nineteen and any appropriate action.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen B. Approval of acceptance of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Homeland Security Grant Program. This is Urban Area Security Initiative in amount of one hundred thirty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-three cents. And the distribution of grant funds to the appropriate Denton County budget line items and any appropriate action.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen C. Approval acceptance of additional sweep funds. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Homeland Security Grant Program, Urban Area Security Initiative. This is the CERT Public Education Response Trailer Grant number four five seven one two zero one in amount of sixteen thousand. And the distribution of grant funds to the appropriate Denton County budget line items and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen D. Approval of request to submit application for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Homeland Security Grant Program. The Urban Area Security Initiative Camera Trailer Grant in amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand and any appropriate action. This is by the Office of Emergency Management. Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is. Fourteen A. Approval of the Cooperative Purchase Agreement between Denton County, Texas and the town of Prosper, Texas and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're going to pull thirteen A, I mean fourteen B. We're going to pull fourteen B. We'll repost at a future time. Let's go to item fourteen C. Approval of interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the town of Ponder, Texas. For the purpose of engineering, wideaway acquisition, utility, relocation, and construction of the north-south connector road. This is a high school road between FM twenty-four forty-nine and January Lane located in the town of Ponder. And Denton County with a county agreeing to contribute five million dollars for satisfactory completion of the project. With funding the amount of five million dollars that come from High School Road located in precinct four trip twenty-two. This is all or light item eight nine seven five seven seven nine zero three zero. The chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is skipped to fourteen E. Pardon me. Approval of master agreement for architectural services between Denton County, Texas and Architexas for the RFPQ two three two seven four five miscellaneous facilities projects. As recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director and any appropriate action.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen F. Approval of master agreement for architectural services between Denton County, Texas and Park Hill for RFP. RFPQ two three two seven four five miscellaneous facilities projects as recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen H. Approval of master agreement for on-call engineering consultant services between Denton County and engineer RFPQ two two dash two seven two five. Between Denton County, Texas and Tignal and Perkins Incorporated as recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen I. This is approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the town of Crossroads, Texas. What's that?
Okay. Sorry. Apologize, Judge.
It's okay. Uh, the town of Crossroads, Texas for the purpose of engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility, relocation, inspections, and construction of Mosley Road. inspections, and construction of Mosley Road for a distance of approximately six thousand six hundred linear feet from US Highway three eighty to Tips Road located in the town of Crossroads and Denton County Commissioner Precinct Two, with the county agreeing to contribute five hundred thousand towards satisfactory completion of the project with funding the amount of five hundred thousand that come from Mosley Road Precinct Two, trip twenty-two, all our line item eight nine seven five six seven nine zero three zero.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Are we all good?
Yes, sir. We are.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen J, approval amendment number one, amend in the Cybersecurity and Data Management Section, Exhibit A of the agreement between Denton County and TeleTask Incorporated as recommended by Kevin Carr, Chief Information Officer. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen K, approval elections administrator bond in amount of twenty thousand dollars with a premium of seventy dollars for Frank Phillips, Denton County Elections Administrator with funding to come from general funds county official bonds, all our line item zero one five five one zero one zero four zero and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Let's go to, we did a great job today. Let's go to item seventeen, which is committee updates. We'll start with Commissioner Precinct One.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Judge. I just want to remind everybody tomorrow we have the Denton County Firefighters Memorial Ceremony. That'll be at ten AM here. And that's all I've got.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. Yeah, we invite everyone to come out tomorrow. Commissioner Falconer.
Yes. Well, we are in the season of lots of activities, so I'm just going to mention the things that are happening within the next week. So Carrollton's got the All About Birds, uh, October twelfth at the Elm Fort Nature Center, and that's one o'clock. And then Saturday's on the square, October fourteenth, downtown Carrollton in the evening. Then we have at Crossroads, we have the Boss Ladies Vendor Market on the fourteenth at ten AM, and I Am Dog Rescues Marktoberfest in Crossroads. So that's October fifteenth at one o'clock at Crossroads Park. Make sure to bring your dog. And let's see, I've got Frisco, we've, we've got Coffee with the Mayor on the thirteenth at eight AM in the library, and Frisco Camp Out on the fourteenth at three o'clock in Frisco Commons Park. And I think, oh, no, I've got Little Elm. Little Elm, we have Trick or Treat at the Lawn on the fourteenth, three o'clock. That's at Main Street. So that's all I, oh, Colony, sorry. Colony has Fright Fest, uh, Family Fright Fest on the fourteenth at three o'clock at Stewart Creek Park. Thanks so much.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Okay, we have Winning the Fight, Stomping Stigma, Five K Fun Walk. Uh, this is to stomp out drugs. Uh, October the fourteenth at the River Walk. We have Fido Fest Walk for Dogs, October the fourteenth, that's in Flower Mountain at Spinks Road. We have a Glowing Pumpkin Plunge at October the fourteenth in Flower Mountain at the CAC, the Community Activity Center. And what's, what's the buzz about native bees, October the seventeenth in Flower Mountain?
I never thought I'd heard you promote a bee.
What's the buzz?
In Hall and Village, we have Concert in the Park, October the fourteenth, and October the twenty-first. In Lake Dallas, we have the Lake City's Trade Days, October the fourteenth. Also, in Lewisville, we have Bird Walk on October the fourteenth. River Care Clean Up at Layla, and we have the Junior Ranger Program on Saturday at Layla in Lewisville. Thrive Rowing, that's going to be at the Thrive Entertainment Center, I mean, uh, Park on fourteenth in Lewisville. Uh, Thrive Nature Walk on October the fifteenth, Neighborhood Grant Workshop, October the seventeenth. Then a Chance to Hike, that's October the twenty-first. That's for all of y'all to go. Ryan, Kevin, and Andrew, and Diane. On, uh, that's all I have this week, but I'm going to go ahead and do Precinct Four since Commissioner Edmondson is out of town. October the eleventh, dementia-friendly nature walk, October the seventeenth, and that's in Denton, is Veterans Hike. Um, I'm just getting the one that's coming up real quick. October the fourteenth, that's Winning the Fight, and she has some of the ones that in Flower Mountain.
Does it say what time that is, Bobby?
Uh?
Does it say what time it is?
On which one?
Winning the Fight.
Winning the Fight. It says eight AM.
Eight AM.
We have to be there, but I think we have to be there a little earlier.
Yeah.
So, uh, October the twelfth in Justin, Annual Hope Gala. October the sev- fourteenth in Lantana, in Lantana Safety and Security Fair in Roanoke, October the fourteenth, Celebrate Roanoke. October the thirteenth in South Lake is Oktoberfest. And I think that's all she has for coming up this next week.
Very good. I like to, with lots of great things that happen in across the county. That is, that is great. We are
We're busy.
We are busy. We are busy. So it's a great, it's great. All right. Let's go to, um, our executive session. We have several items here. I'll read. Item fifteen A under Texas Government Code five five one zero seven one. One A, Consultation with Attorney in a Closed Meeting with a Governmental Body Seeks the Advice with Attorney about Pending Litigation and Cause Number four two three C V zero zero eight six four A L M Style S F versus Denton County, Texas at All, which is currently pending in the United States District Court for the Eastern District Division and Sherman Division. Item fifteen B is Texas Government Code five five one zero seven four five A one, Personal Matters Affecting the County Advisory Body, Closed Mean to Liberate the Appointment, Employment Evaluation, Reassignment Duties, Discipline or Dismissal of a Member of the Advisory Body to With the M H M R Board of Directors. Item fifteen C, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven four five A one, Personal Matters Affecting the County Advisory Body, Closed Mean to Liberate the Appointment, Employment Evaluation, Reassignment Duties, Discipline or Dismissal of a Member of the Advisory Body to With the Child Protective Services Board. Item fifteen D, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven four five A one, Personal Matters Affecting the County Advisory Body, Closed Mean to Liberate the Appointment, Employment Evaluation, Reassignment Duties, Discipline or Dismissal of a Member of the Advisory Body to With the Current Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, Terms Number Two. And fifteen E, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven four five A one, Personal Matters Affecting the County Advisory Body, Closed Mean to Liberate the Appointment, Employment Evaluation, Reassignment Duties, Discipline or Dismissal of a Member of the Advisory Body to With the Denton Central Appraisal District, the DCAT, and any appropriate action. And it is ten thirteen, and we are in executive session.